Being covered not by the state funds that are short, like traditionally, but by county funds. Sadly, with the shortage of funds in White Pine, I did not bring that forward to you guys as a proposal because there just isn't the funds to, or being able to do that even temporarily. But I will let you know that it is a top priority. Believe me, it saddens me that these positions aren't being filled and we don't understand the logic of why they encouraged us to, actually required us to, unpress permanent positions such as this. It will be the top positions that, the extension educator positions will be the first ones that we put back in when we regain state by funding. The University as a whole is eliminated hiring, I think they plan in the next two years to only hire six positions. And that's for the whole university that are permanent. So that kind of gives you the concept of how tight everything's gone down faculty-wise. So sadly, that's my report on that side. I'd love to hear any thoughts that you have regarding our budget, programming. I am very happy with what Alex and Nancy have been able to do on the ground. We've been working with them, supporting them stronger and stronger. And I'm really excited with what they're building and developing in White Pine, but I know we need more than that with an extension educator.
Would you be able to send somebody over here during our, let's say, high season, spring, leading up to the White Pine County Fair, to have somebody here for a week or whatever we need to do to try to address some of these 4-H programs? And you're going to utilize the space here, but I know we can't have a full-time person. And I recognize the other counties, but we are, I think we've agreed to kind of set up a lease option for the office space. But when we have questions or maybe for a week or something where we had, we could get somebody from the Extension Office to come here and help these young people in their program, not full-time, but at least give us a week or something like that. Would that be possible?
I will certainly look into it. I can't dare to say anything because I tell you, we are so lean staff right now. I'm torn myself over how many counties. But I will certainly look into it. And I can't say maybe a week, but I think we could probably, I intend to come out and, you know, spend at least part of the day with you all and have some discussions to make sure that we're covering the needs. We can work on getting Sarah, in fact, we might both come at the same time. She is the 4-H person covering the whole northern area, has many years of experience and been working directly with Alex to get things going and keep things going in a great way. So I will certainly look into the best of my ability to do that. Sadly, we're in the worst place we've been in. We're probably at, we added it up and we're at 77% state funded cuts since 2009, 2008. So yeah, we're running really lean, really, really, really lean. And I don't want to overmax the people I have, but I'm not planning to short you guys by any means. So I will put that down as a mechanism. We certainly will let you know when any of us are coming in that we can come and do things. And if you could provide a feedback of the key areas that you see needing more support, that would be huge because then that would help me to identify the areas that, extensions, that I could borrow some of our people and have them come over and be available.
All I can do is try, so I appreciate your efforts and I hope you can get something done, but I understand your position. But that would be great, greatly help all of our 4-H kids and stuff like that in the springtime. So thank you and do, you know, give it a shot.
Can, may I?
Elizabeth's here.
May I ask a question? Holly, could you touch on what you said about extension educators in other areas? And how you're feeling those positions? You mentioned Churchill County?
Okay, yes. What we're doing in other areas, and if you've got some options, I'm open to these things. What we're doing is we're not hiring, I don't even know what to call it. They're going to take on the role of an extension educator, but they're really considered temporary positions without layoff rights. And we're doing that because we're using county money to pay the cost of that position for now. And then when we get the state funding back, we will have to post the permanent position and rehire. Now with that, that creates a great opportunity that if you've got somebody that started in, working well, they have a better, I should say they have a better chance. Got to be careful on the HI, our side of things. But basically, the best candidate gets the job. And if somebody's doing a great job, that proves up a great foundation for that. So that's what we're doing in Churchill and in Lander and in Tonopah right now. And so that's the idea is we're actually using purely, in almost all cases, county money that's in, in fund balances to fund that position for a year or two until we get the state money back. And I think in Churchill, we actually found another fund on the side that we could tap some. So we've got to scrape the bottom of the barrel just figuring out if there is any way we could work with the county in that manner. We're always very excited and open to doing that.
About, what does that look like on an annual basis? So if the County Commission wanted to pursue that, what would that cost look like?
Let me flip through some of my spreadsheets. I'm going to use my wandering on my computer, but I can give you an estimate straight up from one of our other locations. We usually pay around $70,000 a year plus benefits. And I'm just, I got to pull it up because they keep changing our benefit amounts. So that comes in as... All right, trying to do it fast and I'm making myself go in circles. That comes out to just shy of $100,000 a year.
Okay, so this is just for information to the County Commission. I know that I had multiple commissioners ask me about the extension educator. The tentative budget at this point shows a total beginning fund balance of $177,000. You do have the ability, if you so choose, to pursue this with UNR, to get an extension educator if you feel like you don't want to go an entire year without one. And it can be reevaluated at the end of next year to see if you, if you want to continue that process. I think that something that would be very important to the county is that this does not then become a chronic burden to the county, that the state picks this back up as soon as their revenues are back in place where we become the funder of the extension educator. But I just want to make the County Commission aware of that option. This is the first I've heard of it, so I haven't had the chance to bring that to you prior to this. We would have to budget for, in our final budget, it's not something we would have the ability to augment because you can't augment by that much. It's only the difference between what's projected and what that budget actually is. So if you wanted to do something like that, you'd have to make the decision to adopt that in your final budget.
I have kind of an ignorant question. Are there any kind of agreements we could work out where it's more or less a loan to them? Not just on the policy?
I am not, that, Holly, go ahead.
Oh, I'm going to say, I don't, I can't imagine how difficult that would be to run through the university. And I can tell you, they are not agreeing to anything expenditure-wise right now that way. Now, the funds that you're talking about, Elizabeth, are extension funds. And I, and I have to get Director Lyles to approve that, but I don't think that would be any problem whatsoever in that if we could figure out how to move forward with those fund balances. And I did not realize they were that high. So that's why I'd agree for my colleagues, I should have communicated better. But I think we'd be very interested in figuring out how to take those funds that are separated for extension use specifically in White Pine only and create an agreement. I would be willing to stick my neck out and say, I think Director Lyles would be very interested in that and could approve it from our end of things.
So that said, Holly, this is Lori Carson. The process would be then, so far as sending out to your RFPs? And we would have to go through the process and do the interview process and so forth?
Yeah, just so you know, every position that we're creating, and I can tell you, with the other counties, I was very straightforward and said, I'm making this a temporary position because I see this as like a grant, right? It's like a grant. I don't see this ongoing, but it bridges us until we get the right funding back again. And I don't want to make it any, appear to be any kind of thing beyond that. And we hire them in that, in that context, in a position like that. But we have to get every position approved all the way up to the chancellor right now, so it does take a bit of time. But we could do that. We could follow the same model, I believe, and actually create a position that's similar, but considering no layoff grades. And so it would be like a grant from these funds, essentially, that are at the county level, to hire somebody until, until the money runs out, so you, until we agree we can't do it, it's not working, or until, until we could get the state funds and then post the real permanent position again.
I think we ought to look at this to my colleagues.
So I have a question.
Well, go ahead.
Holly, this is James Beecher, District Attorney. If, so if we don't go forward with the temporary position, would the university only need two offices down here instead of the three?
At the, at the time, yes. Probably, we're not using that space. I hate to do that because I would hope this is only temporary. But, you know, honestly, no, right now, we don't need that office because we don't have capacity to hire that position.
Thank you.
Without a special temporary agreement with the county to bridge that position for them.
All right, thank you. Anyone else got anything? Travis, you got anything you want to add or, you know, you have an ag background and you got anything to say for this conversation?
Yeah, I think it'd be, you know, it's kind of difficult to try to get someone out here for, you know, what could be a temporary job. So I don't, you know, I don't, I don't really know where to go on this because, you know, I'd hate to not have it come through and if there was a person and have them out here, that'd be the end of it. So that's kind of where I'm at. I don't know, kind of feels to me, playing the cart before the horse if we were to do something.
I feel like nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Yeah.
This is important to our youth.
Yeah, and that's why I asked if we could have a part-time. And now the subject is brought up about the utilizing of these spaces. I know the library wants to use these spaces. If we have them tied up with the Extension Office, we need to kind of settle something between the Extension Office not using it and allowing the library to use it. You know, because I think it's just sitting there and the library can use the space, but if the Extension Office is, is right here, they may not be here for a long period of time, but if we allow them to use the space, if they can come here for a couple of days or whatever, we authorize them to use that space, but we still keep that space available for our use in the library because they do have a lot of people that need to use those, those offices back there. And I'm not trying to fall off subject, I'm just trying to say, if this entity is not using the lease, our own offices can use it because we're discussing office spaces for other things anyway. So that's, that's just where I'm at as far as a new position goes. We're doing the budget here, we talked about, we haven't really decided on the county manager. We got a lot of new positions or something that we got to tread lightly on because we don't know how much budget money we have. And don't want $100,000 here, greatly needed, but $100,000 is $100,000.
So this money would not impact your general fund? It comes out of the ag extension fund?
Right.
And I think that if we do decide not to go with a temporary position, the lease that we give to the ag extension for two rooms should be flexible so that when we do get our education, the extension educator back out here, they have that office space because I believe it is an important program for the county. So I would caution that if we do reduce the lease, we decide not to go with a temporary education, extension educator, and then when we redo the lease, make it flexible so that when the state does get its funding back and decide that it wants to get a person out here, they have office space available. I remind you that this entire extension was built with the framework that it was to serve both the library and the extension.
Yes, it was.
And I agree with that, that's right.
I would like to make a motion that we move forward with this.
Is this a motion I'm going to?
No, this, this is to, you know, approve the budget as...
But it says discussion for possible action.
Sure, to approve the budget, but I think, I think you can give direction to Elizabeth about, you know, avenues to look at going forward, but there's, there's no action as far as that specifically here today.
The only thing that you could do is you could approve $100,000 in budget, but not to, to come back with a permanent offer.
I would like, I would like to make a motion then to put that $100,000 into the budget and continue to research and apply that to the extension educator.
So how much money did you say we have in the budget, $174,000?
There's $177,000 budget projected for beginning fund balance for Y22 and the ag extension, special revenue fund.
Now, mind you, by the time we go through the process, it may not even be a full year where those funds are utilized totally.
Yeah, drawing down $100,000, it's just $177,000. And that's, that's, right now, I don't know, until we get these final numbers, we don't even know what the net proceeds, we don't know a lot of stuff. We know we got to get a tentative budget, our final budget in. And where we're sitting right now with what you've done for us, we're ready to move forward and send that in. We can always, if we have that, we can always come back to it, can't we?
Not, not a map. You can only augment a budget by the amount that is over the budgeted amount. So if we get $187,000 is our actual beginning fund balance and I budgeted $177,000, you may augment by $10,000. You may not pull that full amount out unless we exceed by $100,000 and I guarantee you, we won't do that. That's why I'm saying, you can put it in the budget and then you have to agree to it moving forward. And Holly, correct me at any point I'm wrong. So if we put this in the budget and then the County Commission doesn't like the overall concept that's presented, they can say, no, they don't want that done and that, that budget would not be utilized. Is that correct or does the university look at that differently?
No, no. In, in actual, if you look at the NRS, I'll be honest, it says that it is the director's decision on the extension. But we operate completely as a partnership with the county. And if the county is not happy with it, we would not proceed any further with it. So it would probably be wise to designate that. And Elizabeth, am I clear that, am I okay to say that probably the majority of that $177,000 has already been collected in taxes and sitting there for us?
A good majority of it. The big number that hasn't come in is the net proceeds of minerals and that's budgeted at $13,000. So...
So I'm just kind of, you know, kind of creating some clarity in that the money's collected tax-wise and then we operate. I can tell you that we do keep money usually in that beginning fund balance as a security for rainy days. We are considering that in the other counties as a rainy day. We're tapping those types of reserves saying, you know, this is a problem. That's when we have these types of circumstances to do that. So yes, I would, I would say that we very much could, if you're comfortable with it, budget that $100,000. You're right in that it, we would take some time to get it all lined up and hired to, it would be quite that full amount for sure because we wouldn't have somebody on the ground that quick since it's already been made. But we would move as quickly as we could to try advertise and get something going. After we discuss what is comfortable with, you know, I'd come back and actually discuss this as an agenda item with you all.
So we have a motion, we have a motion?
I don't know if we, I don't even know if we have to make a motion. I think we just, I can include that in our directions to the finance officer to go ahead and, and just set that aside, I guess, and then we can come back and decide what we're actually going to do later. But I'm good with putting a finger in it.
So then I'll send my motion.
Okay. Let's try to move this along. Is there anything else we got on cooperative extension, Elizabeth?
I think that is everything on that one. And then I just had the last item in my memo to you is, are there other things you want me to consider and look at and have ready? Because your next meeting will be your public budget hearing and adoption of the final budget. So if there are other things, we can always go back and just, like I just explained, augment because there's money there, it has to be pursuant to NRS that I do that. So are there other things that you want me to fully consider? Do you want me to add the transfers in for next year for, from the general fund over to the capital improvements fund for the historic courthouse renovation? So we start putting that money into place?
I would think so.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and do that. I will bring back a number for the lease space, what that looks like. And I'll continue to work with Bill to see what the timing on that might look like. Was there any objection to any of the things under the top part where I told you I added or deleted or amended numbers that you would like to discuss? Or are those okay for me to bring those into your final adopted budget?
I think it looks good.
Yeah.
The one item we have on here that I don't think we've ever said yay or nay was the county manager money. And you have that in there for us to look at? And we're sitting here now and Travis is on here. I think that we need to try, probably decide because why wait till we have the public hearing? If we either have it in or have it not. Does this commission want to go forward with the county commission thing with all the money, money we've had coming in here? Or can we eliminate that particular item so that we get to our regular budget rate to turn it in? This discussion is mute for this year. And I personally, and I'll just say how I feel about it. I think we're doing just fine the way we are for this year. As we move forward, the county manager can come into play. But as we're getting this budget ready to turn in to be permanent, we've got just the next meeting, our public hearing, let's see the, we'll see. Let's decide whether we want to move forward and start the process of hiring a county manager or whether we want to just eliminate that from this year's budget and move forward to the rest.
I, I would say, and I'm not taking into account some of these changes that we hear that Elizabeth just put in there, just off the top of my head, round numbers. Last time I looked, we were over half a million dollars in the green, above and beyond even our own resolution of 25%, when that number was, we were doing pretty good. And so there's capacity there certainly for, for the salary for a county manager. I don't feel like, you know, if things go really sideways, we can make it up. But we are, we're not in just a good position. We're in a really good position financially because, you know, we've been making decisions, things have been going well. We've come out the backside of this disaster of last year and things are not as bad as we were expecting they might be. So again, I have nothing but optimism for the future for this place. And those are the kind of decisions we need to make to put us in a position to grow properly.
So...
I agree.
Okay. Travis, do you have, you have anything to say about this? And Shane?
Yeah, my opinion is, my opinion is just go with our IT engineer that we were going to hire and put the county manager, you know, look, I know we always say this, but we'll get it again next year. I think just kind of doing one, one brick at a time to me is a little more, probably overly cautious. But once again, there's a lot of unknowns in regards to our mining industry right now and I would hate to overstep that.
And, and I agree with you on that. And Shane, are you on the phone? Do you happen to be on the phone? Because he would be, it looks to me like it's a, it's a two-two type of, just based on conversation. We haven't made a vote yet, but it looks to me like a two-two tie. It can't be passed if it's a two-two tie.
Well, it's not really passing it, we're just...
So what, what you could do is you can have it on in the budget and then when you vote on the final budget, vote to eliminate any of the line items. Or, or not.
Or, or you can tell me not to add it in and it could be a point of discussion for change to the... It's easier to do it the way that your district attorney just indicated, that I put it into the budget and then you say, yes, we'd like to approve it, but we would like the county manager position reduced out. It will require me to redo paperwork, but that's okay.
That's why I kind of wanted...
For the first time it happened.
That's why I kind of wanted to decide today so you didn't have to do all that extra paperwork. And so if we have a motion, is this a motion I have?
No.
No, okay.
Doesn't mean to me. I would think it would be prudent to bring it back for one more round when we're all here. And if we all decide we're not going to do it, then it's cool, you know, I'd like to do it though.
And I appreciate the board because that's what this board is all about. You, you round table, you discuss it and hey, whatever way, the chips fall where they may, but we have five people and we have five different ideas. So let's just leave it at that, Elizabeth, the way the district attorney said. Well, when we have a full board on the 26th or so, we can decide. Okay. Is there anything else?
That was everything I had for you in the budget unless you had questions for me.
Okay.
Still in the fire district.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, we have one more.
But I got to, I got to get back to that. We have five more in the fire district? Or we just have one?
Mostly, mostly.
Okay. Page three, item five, discussion approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within a fund that do not increase the total appropriation of fund.
We have number four.
We have four.
It's the monthly financial reports.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Let me get here. Okay, whatever we have here. Yeah. Okay, I have a motion, a public, discussion for public, discussion for possible action. Approval of monthly financial reports for 20, April 2021. We have a motion by Lori and a second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, pass unanimous. Now we'll go to number five on page three. Discussion for possible action, the approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within a fund that do not increase the total appropriation of the fund or just for approved grant slash agency funds. Elizabeth?
That is in your backup material. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to go ahead and answer them. Otherwise, I would just ask for your approval and passing them. It's just budgeting, it's just balancing line item to line item within fire. And Ian, ask for your fire district.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Item six, discussion for possible action, the approval of a volunteer fire station capital improvement project brought forth by Brett North. And that's, I think, is that what you brought to us?
Yep.
Okay. Motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Item seven, this discussion for possible action, the approval to award the bid for the four cardiac monitor defibrillations by Brett North. We have that in our backup, the two bids. And Brett, have you taken a look at these and...
Yeah. My recommendation at this point would probably be to go with Zoll's. They're compatible with all the cities, Metax, Reach. That's what they all do, so.
That makes sense. Motion to approve.
Motion by, motion to...
And a motion to Zoll.
I know that's where I had a hard time with Zoll.
$103,636. Okay, we have a motion by Ian?
I'll second that.
And a second by Lori to award to Zoll. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, pass unanimous. Last item, item eight, discussion for possible action, approval of the minutes from the following fire commission meeting, special joint meeting April 7, 2021, and the April 14, 2021 meeting. Anybody?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori?
Both of them.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous. Okay, we are now at the end of the fire commission meeting and we're going into public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone? None? Any in the office, in the building?